So I'd like to call the Rockland Fire Protection District Board Trustees regular meeting Monday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty, at six oh four P M. to order. Trustee Malinowski, President, President, Trustee Bernstein.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
I'll call him.
Via telephone. Chiefs Karine Seber, Carl Stumblin-Treasure, and Attorney Jim Morgo. Others in attendance, I will ask for your names just so we have a record, please, I'll start over there.
Rod Bosick.
Rod?
Yes.
John Stephen.
John.
Stephen.
Stephen.
S I E M A.
Ben Lovingher.
Mike Segal.
Mike Segal. All right, and we all rise for the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I mean, just enough copies, finally, I don't have to throw anything away. Okay, moving on to item number three, public hearing on fiscal year twenty twenty-one, budget appropriations ordinance, I'd like to hold them in the hearing at.
Well, let me, can I just explain?
Yeah, right.
So tonight, we have on the agenda, we had the budget appropriations ordinance for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-one, which runs from April third.
May first.
Yeah, May first and April thirty. Part of the budget process requires public bodies to hold a public hearing regarding the proposed budget. You have to have at least one public hearing before we can hold on. So tonight is the night we chose to have a public hearing, and I did publish in the New Sun, which we published on June third, providing notice of this public hearing two minutes. So, Marson, if you could make a motion to open the, open the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to open public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty dash O one, ordinance adopting the budget appropriations of the Rockland Fire Protection District, Lake County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
It's made at six oh seven, take a look.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes.
Please, second. Second.
And Dave, since it's okay to participate, but we can't use your votes on, on these items, because you don't fall within the exceptions of the Open Meetings Act.
Right.
But you're more than welcome to participate, obviously.
Right.
And I can, I can mark you down as, you know, what you would vote, but I'll just kind of make a note that we're not counting your vote, because we'll need two votes to pass anything tonight, so.
All right, so I guess we'll do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, yep.
Trustee Bernstein.
Yes.
Trustee Malinowski.
Yes.
And just for good measure, trustee Anderson.
Yes.
So open at six oh eight P M.
Six oh eight.
Public hearing. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on the proposed budget appropriation ordinance? So.
All right. Is it just, you know, for the record, the, the appropriation ordinance has not changed from the draft that we published last month, according to requirements. So just real briefly, the corporate fund appropriation is four hundred and two thousand four hundred dollars. The ambulance appropriation is two hundred and ninety-seven thousand six hundred dollars. And the liability tort fund appropriation is five thousand dollars, or a total appropriation of seven four, seven hundred, five thousand dollars, you know. And that will, we will run this, I mean, some projected revenues. Again, as I always mention, we have a working budget that is twenty thousand dollars less than that, that's six hundred and five thousand dollars. But we appropriate an extra twenty thousand dollars for emergencies, so that we don't have to go through the budget process again, something unworth it. So our working budget is six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, our revenues will be about five thousand dollars short of that. We generally try to have, at best, a, or at least, a balanced budget, maybe with a small contribution to the surplus. But this year, as we did last year, we were budgeting to pay off an extra fifty thousand dollars of the mortgage, because the way it was structured, it would have been a hundred thousand dollar balloon, about a year and a half. And this will, we already got rid of fifty thousand of it, and the other thousand will actually bring the date of the, of the closing of the mortgage of over four, four few months. So that's money that's coming out of the surplus, basically, so we're really not debt suspending, because this is a one-time deal, we wouldn't do this anymore. Also, just as a note, as we mentioned before, this year, the contract for, you know, for the services, for the private, private services, went up by forty-six thousand dollars. From now on, it will only go up by basically C P I, so this is a one-time deal. So that's why, again, this year's budget is about forty-five thousand dollars higher than last year's budget, just because of that. And then, but then we'll, we'll move on, and so that will, so that's the, 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 the liability measure.
Okay. So, being as there's no public comment, I'd like to close the public hearing.
At six eleven?
Let's look at the time, at six eleven. Now, we're making a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to close the hearing at six eleven?
Second.
And we'll roll call vote, trustee Bernstein?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
And trustee Malinowski, yes. All right, moving on to four. Discussion and adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one, budget and appropriation ordinance. Carl, anything you want to add outside of?
No, I think the, the comments before for the public are almost the same, so it's just, here it is.
Yep, yeah, nothing changed since last month. Um, I think I laid out everything very well.
And then, once we pass, we'll have to file with the clerk's office.
Yes, and you will take care of that, Paul.
I, I brought three copies with signing. And we also have to publish it in the New Sun.
Yes, and I'm sorry, Paul, that's the expensive one.
Yeah, this is a little more expensive.
Um, but you've got, you've got a work document that since you has not been changed, so.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll go ahead to, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Just ahead of here.
Second.
Wait, wait, wait. Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash O one, ordinance adopting the budget and appropriations of the Rockland Fire Protection District, Lake County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Motion by me.
Second.
Second by trustee Bernstein. Roll call vote, trustee Bernstein?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Malinowski, yes. Okay. Good on that, Jim. Trustee. Moving on to item five, minutes from last month's regular meeting, June eighth, twenty twenty. Do you have a chance to review the minutes, Dave, any comments on them, or are you good to go?
I review them, good to go.
Okay. Amy?
I'm good.
Good. Fine. No comments or corrections? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Rockland Fire Protection District Board Trustees for June eighth, twenty twenty.
Second.
And that we just do a voice vote, and then we roll call.
We did a voice vote.
Polls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right. And on to six, chiefs. What do we got?
Uh, busy month for us in June, we had seventeen calls, all ambulance calls. I did also put down there in the notes that I've been following all the COVID statistics, and they list on the I D P H website, the nursing homes with outbreaks, and Claridge has been kind of holding steady with sixty positive cases. My quote, my numbers here were eighteen deaths as of this Friday, they updated every Friday afternoon, there was one more, so. Definitely not the worst in Lake County, but not, not the best, but I've seen some in Long Grove with like two hundred or more cases, so. We're hoping it's that number's flattening out, but they've kept us busy over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chief, do you know, kind of roughly, what the, what the population is?
In there, no, I, I don't have an exact count on it, but.
Just curious.
Yeah, I've been looking at that, and I follow also on there on the, the I E P H website, they'll show by zip code of, of testing and positive cases. And for six zero, zero four four, they probably account for more than half of the positive cases in, in that zip code. Like, it was like a hundred and fourteen last time I checked, so you gotta look at that, that number skews that, you know, Lake Bluff and Nolwood with that with a high count. But, you know, I was looking at stuff in the, in Lake County, in this area in general, we've been definitely going on a down, downward rate, which is good, so let's hope that trend continues. That's all I got.
And then you have our report, similar, six calls last month, four rescue, two service calls. We haven't, we haven't had the COVID response that they had in the whole area, so that's, you know, open the residential part, so that's a good thing. Unless you guys have any questions?
How's Sheridan and the other nursing home, or where did you make the gardens? I was just curious, since nursing homes tend to be, I mean, pretty much at center of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the Green Oak Senior Living, which is the old Maiden Gardens, just recently had their first case.
Wow.
And the Sheridan, I think we had thirteen there, twelve or thirteen. And they've all been in memory care, and so it's not spread throughout, it's just been in the memory care section, so.
We're at, oh, Lake Forest Place, the Bell Memorial Care Center, it's listed, there was eleven cases and two deaths, so. And that's, you know, there's two hundred and sixty-two beds there, so that's a pretty big facility.
So outside of, obviously, you know, nursing homes, I mean, you know, more confined, seems like it's not. But, as you said, chief, it's, it's flattening, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't think I have anything else for chiefs, Amy? Dave, anything for chiefs?
Uh, no, I'll go, I got another question.
Okay. All right, moving on to agenda item seven, public comment. The district trustees allocate time for those individuals who would like the opportunity to address the fire district trustees on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each person addressing the trustees is asked to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. I believe you gentlemen are here for agenda item twelve. Correct, so unless there's anything else you'd like to talk about besides that? No? Well, no, no public comment? Yes, sir.
Do your ambulances use this building?
No.
No, where, where are they based?
Uh, currently, all our services are provided by Lake Forest and Lipton.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to eight, attorney's report. Anything exciting, Supreme Field, Jim?
The only thing I've reported on, and I might have said this last time, there was an Open Meetings Act amendment regarding personal, attendance by the trustees personally attending, allowing an expansion of the video conference meeting. We, we never did that, a lot of places have been doing Zoom, it was pursuant to the governor's executive order regarding disaster declaration. Now, what they've done is modify the in-person meeting recording, because right now, under the Open Meetings Act, with this amendment, trustees need to appear, have a meeting, with certain exceptions. They can telephone in, those exceptions being emergency situation, work situation, and so forth. And Dave is, this is a personal trip that he's taken, so unfortunately doesn't get involved to it. Now, there are certain requirements, to the extent, if things start to tick up like they are in some other parts of the, the country, hopefully, hopefully, they, they won't, we're doing a lot of things that a lot of states are not doing, with, with masks and so forth. So, but in case there are, we have the option to, to do a video conference or a telephone conference for the meetings. But we would need somebody here at the physical location, at least one of, one of the members could be legal counsel. It doesn't have to be necessarily a trustee, but there needs to be one person here, and we have to make a determination that, or the board president needs to make a determination that an in-person meeting is that conducive, considering the current situation. And there are, there are still a number of places that are actually still doing the Zoom meetings, they're more larger bodies. We don't necessarily get the attendance that a village might get, we, we often don't get much. You guys, you guys, I've seen poor people come to your meetings, actually, in, in a lot of places. So we do have that option.
Okay. And is that still like an expansion of the governor's executive orders, or was that?
Well, that was codified in statutes.
Okay, it was, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So they met in, in May twentieth, special statute, so that's one of the, one of the pieces of legislation that they worked, among others. And they also did some stuff with workers' comp presumption regarding COVID nineteen, but this district, we, we don't have employees, so that's very relevant for our purposes as well. And again, just to touch on the budget, as I noted with Carl, the second part of the process here is for us to file at the clerk's office as well, as public shit, you know, how to do that. I am not aware whether the clerk's office is open or not. Carl, are you aware? Couple of weeks ago, they weren't, because we had some early firms that passed budgets, and.
Yeah, I think, I believe that they are, and there are some that, that, I'll try to, you know, there they are, I mean, some, some of the, the clerk's business.
And, and so, other than that, and I know we've got some other items on the agenda, which we can talk about that, but.
Okay. All right, then moving on to number nine, treasurer's report. I think you just answered.
Um, the balance sheet are for the June thirtieth. Checking account was four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, the reserve account is three hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. And petty cash is a hundred and four dollars and nine cents, or total cash of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, seventy-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Uh, budget tracking, um, we'll have next month, because we now have a budget.
Mm-hmm.
So I will create budget tracking of the budget, so next month will be our course to create that.
All right, so I would make a motion to approve treasurer's report as presented, do we got to repeat the numbers here, Jim?
No.
No, good enough.
Second.
And roll call vote, trustee Bernstein?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Malinowski, yes. And outstanding voices, Carl?
Yeah, I'll give the, the checks to approve. Um, the first one, which actually gave the check last month, meeting, for eleven thousand, five hundred dollars to the City of Lake Forest for the good, because I didn't mention how the, the contract went up to forty-six thousand, the bill that we got for the first payment on it didn't reflect that, so we're, we're making that up.
Sure they were happy?
Yeah. Hopefully. Guests, utility gas, even dollars, the mortgage seventy-five hundred dollars, legal seven hundred and fifty, phone and internet, hundred and eighty-four, I think that networking is for the contract on the credit, hundred and thirty-five for the quarter, ComEd, two hundred and ninety, uh, Lake County water, twenty-three dollars, and then Chicago treatment for publishing, the, the notice of meeting today, twenty-nine dollars for it. Since for total expenditures, twenty thousand, five hundred and two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Um, just real quick, I mean, not really relevant to this, but before we move on, you saw a bunch of outstanding checks on those, though.
There's just a few.
Just a few?
Yeah.
Any bigger matters?
No, they're, they're, they're very small ones, yeah.
Okay.
And we've got another year or so, we've got to report this day.
Okay, I was just curious.
But I can track them down.
Okay, I was just curious, since that hasn't popped up in a little while.
This is the second go-around, and.
Yeah, done. Okay, uh, so they make a motion to approve the outstanding invoices as presented?
Second.
Uh, for the total of twenty thousand, twenty thousand, five hundred and two dollars and thirty-five cents?
Second.
Uh, trustee Bernstein?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Malinowski, yes. Did I correct myself in time there, Jim?
Yes. I, I'd like to, I'd like to have it repeated, but we move on, some places, they're like, they'll still get paid.
All right, update on building use policy. This is the condos?
Yeah. Basically, yeah, it was just done under the, the policy.
Yeah, something like that.
To ensure you get the chance to, to get the, let's see, some of them.
All right, so. Uh, agenda number eleven, so Dave, I'll take you and Amy, everyone else present. Uh, the Robin Wood Estates Condo Association reached out, um, looking for temporary parking while they're having their parking lot resurfaced, um, and they're right around the corner here on Chay Park. Um, we, I worked with attorney Jim Morgo, directed up, rather, Jim directed up a parking lot use and indemnification agreement, pretty much to cover the district's liability, make sure that the condo association is sufficiently insured, outlining the dates that they'll be using the, the parking lot and potentially the apron. Those dates are July twenty-second, July twenty-third. Uh, the condo association did offer to reimburse the district, or offer for compensation, rather, to the district, one hundred dollars, uh, being that the condo association isn't a not-for-profit group, or any other, or anything like that, that in my opinion was, was fair, to charge them that fee. Um, I do have a certificate of liability insurance here from them, and a signed indemn, indemnification agreement from them here as well, waiting for, um, the board president's signature, and then the secretary's signature. Unless there's any opposition to it, I'll go ahead and sign and let them know that it's all good. Dave, anything?
Uh, no, I'll go.
Okay, uh, so I have that here, Jim, we'll sign it, you know, before we, we, Dave, file that away, and then I'll send it over to them. I'll make sure to notify, um, Sheriff's Department, Chiefs, you're here, obviously, so if there's a large number of vehicles here on twenty-second, twenty-third, that's exactly why, it's the condo association, they did reach out to the lake house as well, but it looks like that's all.
The lake house is no more.
Lake house is no more, um, sorry, there's not many good parking areas or kind of a city, so they, they estimated.
Twenty-seven, twenty-three, or?
No, I, I was just thinking about the number of cars, number of vehicles, I believe, if I remember correctly, it said about twenty-five.
There's twenty-three, there's twenty-three marked spaces.
Twenty-three marked spaces, sometimes some units have a couple visitors or a couple vehicles, and so.
So it was clearly, it was, it was very common when we were, used to park on the apron, right, to, you know, diagonally, right, and for you to put like three cars in there, not block the base doors.
Yeah, yeah, but right now, I mean, bays aren't obviously used like a lot, so, so should be sufficient, I've been contacting with the, the condo association president there, um, and, you know, if there's no opposition, then I'll continue, so let them know that it's all good, and allow them use of the parking lot.
Do you guys want to approve, uh, just want to approve the, the hearing?
Sure, uh, let's make a motion to, I'm, approve the indemnification agreement, Jim, or just?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, make a motion to approve the in, 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 can't speak, indemnification agreement with, uh, Robin Wood Estates Condominium Association.
Second.
And roll call vote, or just voice vote, Jim?
Um, roll call.
Roll call, uh, trustee Bernstein?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Malinowski, yes. Okay, so I got that here, that's to file.
The way you're saying the insurance.
Yeah, I got, yeah, I got it right here, so. Um, I was pending anything, any of your concerns on there?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, moving on to agenda item twelve, discussion action on lease or sale of the Rockland Fire District building. Dave, I believe this is why you're on the phone?
That is correct.
Um, before we get started on this, I'd just like to make one quick comment. Um, we do have representatives here, I guess, who are interested in, in the building, let's put it that way. Uh, if you could refrain from prices, dollar amounts, things like that, because obviously the board. What's that?
Okay.
Yep, uh, just because the board hasn't made any decisions yet to sell the building or not, currently, the only decision the board, the, the only decision the board has made is to lease the building. So if there's a desire to purchase the building, um, the board has not made any decisions in that regard officially, um, so I would ask you to refrain from prices, just because then that gets into legal issues, we want to avoid.
Right, okay.
All right, um, all right, Dave, I'll, I'll try and prop you up here on my phone, so hopefully everyone can hear you, but the floor is yours.
All right, I was kind of thinking about that, um, a colleague here from, uh, a person from, uh, in the video, and he said he has some clients who are interested in either renting or purchasing the building, um, the Rockland Fire Protection Building. I explained to him that, you know, there's potential of the highway being expanded, a closure being put in, so knowing that, that, you know, a purchase, you know, would be with, you know, the camp yet, that will remain viability, but just to make them through, and, you know, do have to maintain the confidence that, you know, they're well worth it, so that's about as far as, um, it went, to the study, and, you know, very, uh, interested parties who are obviously here in their meeting tonight, that either renting or purchasing the building. I did mention to him that, you know, we would like to have a, just probably have a meetings, you know, once a month, and, you know, have access to be able to access the office, cover meetings, he said that should not be a problem, so. That's about as far as I got with Ben, um, maybe the, maybe the room attendance, minutes, amount, a little bit more, but that's about as far as I've gotten with Ben on the purchase slash leasing of the building.
All right, thank you, Dave.
That comes through, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I heard you fine, everyone else here, if that's all you got, I'll go ahead and hand it over to, to Ben, I guess, to fill, fill us the rest of the way in.
So, uh, yeah, Dave pretty much covered everything that we talked about, um, you know, he said this needs to happen, have the discussion amongst the board, to see what direction you all want to go with this property. My tenants here, they are interested in, uh, their, plan A would be to purchase, I'm not sure where you guys are at on that timetable, but also, if that is not an option right now, I think a lease with a first right of refusal on the purchase would be an option that they would be interested in. I don't think, uh, you know, it would be to anybody's benefit to do any longer term, and I, I don't know, you know, twelve month terms, um, and possibly, you know, reevaluate your position at that point as far as the sale, but, um, I think they would be comfortable, uh, doing that, um, you know, per the first right of refusal, that, uh, you know, i- if it does go off to the open bid process, the current tenant would have the opportunity to match the high bid at, at that time, you know, to, to get, to purchase the property. Um, I don't know if they'd be interested in, in leasing if that was not included in the lease, I guess that would be open for discussion. You know, like Dave said, you know, we really didn't get too far into any negotiations with anything, um, just opening the discussion, I guess, you know, where, where, where are you guys at, where, I think we know where, where we're at, what. Um, just opening the discussion, I guess, you know, where, where, where are you guys at, where, uh, I think we know where, where we're at, what we would like to do, but, um, see, see where, where the board is, is headed and what, uh, you know, I guess the future holds, I, you know, I, the cloud of, of the redevelopment of the interchange, I guess, is over our head, but, um, given the current times, who knows, I mean, we know how much, you know, tax revenue the state is losing on a daily basis. Are they really going to have those funds to do this, uh, you know, in the next three to four years like originally planned? Um, I think they got, uh, more important things to worry about, so I, I, I think we're willing to, to take that, that chance. And, and if they do happen to come through with the eminent domain, um, you know, uh, obviously this is on our end, uh, with the purchase and or lease, um, you know, we should be able to at least get our, our money back out of it at that point, so.
Okay, um, any comments or anything, Amy? All right, uh, Dave, anything else?
Uh, no, I mean, I think I've been, kind of, pretty much covered everything that you and I discussed.
Okay, uh, so from, from my end here, uh, as far as, uh, sale of the building, uh, as I mentioned earlier before we started the agenda item twelve, uh, the board has not taken any action for that, so that could take a while, uh, just because we have to defer to, to counsel, find out what the correct process is to sell the building. Uh, previously, prior to this board, um, taking seat, the previous process was, and I have to please correct me, uh, was that the board made a decision to sell the building, uh, the process that happened was that it would go, uh, it would be, uh, announced in, in, in the paper to the public for X amount of time, all, all sealed bids had to be in by X date, sealed bids were open, um, and then discussion happened from that.
The key thing, and, and Jim, you know, really good, is that the board has to pass a resolution that really in detail defines the process that they wish. Um, and just run into, I mean, whether, you know, whether they're going to use a broker, and if so, what the broker's fees are going to be, if that's not in there, you can't. Um, so, I mean, it has to be very, very explicit, right, and it requires, that process does require a, um, appraisal, a formal appraisal. Um, because there's a, you know, you can't go below a certain percentage of the appraisal, it's not legal to sell, that's one of the restrictions, so it would have to be appraised. While the appraisal was done before, I think we all realized that appraisal had flaws that caused a lot of trouble, and so I would not wish, my opinion would be not to rely on that appraisal, but to get a fresh appraisal.
We just have to use an M, M A I appraisal, which is the highest certification for appraisers.
And as far as, uh, you know, agency representing, uh, the fire district, Dave did mention something about dual agency, uh, me also representing, um, the district. Um, if that was on the table, um, I know my clients are okay with that, uh, obviously, um, you know, both parties need to be in agreeance, uh, on that. Whether it's a sale or a lease, there would need to be representation, I think, for, for you as well, whether, uh, I do it for you or you hire an outside partner.
Sure, uh, so, so, yeah, before we get back to the, the lease side, for the sales side, there's still a lot of.
For sure.
Items that need to be taken care of, you know, the board needs to make a resolution, make some decisions, uh, you know, get, get appraised and appraisal done, um, et cetera. So that's going to be a process. Um, going to the lease side, yes, the board, the previous board and this board has still continued to allow building, uh, to have a building for lease. Um, so if that's something, uh, that, uh, you, your, your clients would be interested in, then yes, those conversations can start. Um, we have to figure out with whom those conversations would be, um, I guess we'll talk about trustee Anderson's email, uh, and a couple of agenda items. Uh, but that's something that I believe now, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, or anyone else here, those conversations can start once the board has, uh, assigned a, a delegate to have those conversations with, uh, Mr. Lovinger and his, his clients.
Sure, in particular, well, on the lease.
On the lease, on the lease.
More, more so, we have a lot of flexibility on that end.
Though, as it stands, we, the building is being leased right now under an I G A to the George Blake Bluff, so.
Yes, yes.
Well, that's, that, that also has to be.
That's, 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 that's still, yep, I'm, that, good point, I did forget about that, um, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we are aware of that.
The law is still currently, currently has an I G A, integral agreement for the building, um.
Yes. Is there, it's on, yeah.
It's, it's open-ended, it's, it's in response to, uh, you know, the COVID nineteen and coronavirus, just in case they need to quarantine.
Mm-hmm.
Any of their, um, you know, their members on the fire, fire department, police department, or any other village, um, employee.
How will we know, uh, or I guess how will you know, um, I mean, how, how would that come to an end, uh, amongst, uh, government agencies, I mean, is it just?
Like I said, right now it's open and there's no clear end, I mean, honestly, I think everyone thought it would have died down by now.
I think it's, it's set up as a thirty-day.
Yeah, there was, there was a term and then thirty-day renewal, so, so there is, yeah, I think there was, was it three, was it three months to begin with and a thirty-day, or is it? No, it was thirty-day rolling, thirty-day, it was all time, month-to-month, um, so, so there is severability there, if it can be ended.
Okay.
Um, it's not, it's indefinite, you know, so, apologies for making it sound like it was, but.
No, no.
Um, yeah, I have that in front of me, so I should have been able to answer.
Thanks.
Um, so, yeah, so if it's, if it's, you know, something that individuals are interested in sooner, uh, leasing, you know, obviously, we can talk with, uh, Lake Bluff. I think I'm still allowed to have conversations with Lake Bluff.
Right, I think you are authorized to.
By the board, yeah, so, so that's something that can, can be arranged outside of having the scheduled meetings.
Okay.
Um, and then with the lease aspect of it, um, I guess we can jump to, I don't know, we don't have to close this agenda item yet, I mean, we can maybe jump back to it.
Can I, can I ask a question, what, what are you planning on, what, what's the plan use of the?
Yeah, that's a key question.
There you go.
Um, Mike Seaman, I'm the father of John, and Rod is my son's best friend, uh, they're interested in buying the building. And, uh, your existing zoning is residential, which allows a public use of this facility, this building. The county has told me through the planning and zoning department that no private entity could lease this building unless the zoning is changed or business use. You have business zoning adjoining on the south and the north, and this is just a little island of residential between those two. So no, the use would be for a contractor, and they would not allow a contractor to lease this property because it's not a public use until the zoning is changed to general business, and contracting under general business is allowed in, in many different places and permitted, right? So I have a question here, I see a big sign on the front of the building for lease through a real estate agent, is that listing agreement still in effect, or is it canceled? That's over.
That, that was a better message.
Okay, I want to thank your treasurer, on June twenty-third, he gave us a beautiful tour of the building, all of us were there. And, uh, the people liked the building, were there, and at that time I asked, and maybe the board can authorize the treasurer to get us a copy of the survey. Uh, been talking with the county's planning and zoning department, they also said, in addition to any rezoning of the property to the business classification, we would have to look at the survey and see if any variations and some setbacks are required. In addition, they want to inspect the building because they believe, uh, they have something on the books that says if it's fifty percent deteriorated, they want it torn down. Well, there's no issue on that, but they haven't been here.
Sure.
So that's, uh, the things we need to start working and thinking about what we're going to do with it would be a property survey that shows the building on the lot. And, uh, your treasurer did say, uh, there's a possibility that we could look at some plans when the building was built twenty-eight years ago. And to see if it's fit for their contracted use and their future uses that they're thinking about. So that's right where we are, uh, my last question is, the insurance agent, we like to talk with the insurance agent about the type of coverage and the cost it would cost them for their proposed use, to see if, 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 if it's within their budget, you know?
Sure, sure.
So that, that's about it.
Uh, so first, first, um, for, uh, requesting copies of the documents, if we have those on file.
Oh, sure, sure. There's, there's a big stack of blueprints that I just got sent.
Yeah, so if, if we have, you know, those, those specific documents, um, sorry, I just forgot your last name. Mr. S- Mr. Seaman.
Mike Seaman, yeah.
Uh, that Mike, you don't mind, um, is, is, is looking for, I don't have a problem, um, easier for an ask now than just an employee, so we got it. I, I don't have a problem, um.
Thanks.
For giving him a copy, uh, as far as for the insurance, that's.
Yeah, the one, the insurance, the, the issue is, is that we use a insurer that's a specialty for fire departments.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because the.
So we go to anybody else then?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, yeah, because they're, they're mainly interested in liability, which obviously our insurance is considerable as now under our services agreement.
Does it not use?
Because, yeah, because we're, we're, you know, the, that, that's their issue, not so much ours anymore, so, yeah, I don't think our insurance would be of much value, because it is a specialty company, um, that really does, that bothers your fire departments.
And we did find out that, uh, the building's financed with, uh, WindTrust?
Yes.
And, uh, to sponsor permission to find out if it's, uh, an assailable mortgage, I have no idea if it is or not, unless I look at the document. If we could get a copy of, uh, the mortgage document, they would agree.
My guess is it probably isn't, it only runs for about eighteen months.
Eighteen months, okay.
Roughly, yeah.
You're probably right.
The other thing you mentioned about, about any easements or anything, I guess we talked about the Siren.
Of the Siren, huh?
Yeah, I think I didn't mention.
Yeah, you didn't, yeah, that, that.
That, that may need to be somehow either carved out or an easement set up, so, so that, uh, like force maintains that?
That would have to state and be used, uh, public use.
Public use.
Yeah, power, yeah, power.
And, and the power.
Yeah.
Honestly, you know, gentlemen brought up a good point about the building, obviously, you're going to release. I haven't thought about this a whole lot, but on the number of leases, then you do a lease, you know, you have to warrant that the property can be utilized in the fashion that you're leasing. Obviously, yeah, this is a residential area, residential zoning type, that's not uncommon, fire departments.
That's correct.
Will be put in residential areas. So that does create, you're both commercial, on both sides of the.
Yeah, adjoining.
Commercial on the inside, you're right.
See, I thought this was in the previous board.
Nobody said zoning was simple.
No, it's not, it's not.
As you gentlemen probably, no, so, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how that would work with the, with, with the county as far as, you know, uh, zoning, but that's certainly something that has to go through a public hearing.
I could give you some factors, I talked with the planning department, a rezoning petition will take between three and five months. At this time, they're doing video hearings, there's no groups of people and objectors coming to the, uh, location to voice their opinions, uh, the fee is thirty-five hundred dollars approximately for the filing of the petition, plus the court reporter, plus the publication. And public bodies are not exempt from the fee, for any variation that's needed, it's approximately a thousand dollars. And that's why we need the survey to take to them to see if there's any variations at all. As an attorney for the buyers, I certainly want the attorney for the, for the fire department to present a petition because, uh, it would have much more pull than, than an individual coming in to use the property, uh, knowing that it should be sold for a future use. So, uh, that gives you the, the time span, once the petition is received, published, and they receive their money, they go ahead with this hearing. Then it goes before the planning and zoning committee, which is now called the Public Works Committee of Lake County, for their internal review and report of recommendation to the county board. And which time the county board, or then says they could have municipalities within a mile and a half object to rezoning, but I don't think Lake Bluff would, uh, yeah, or Lake Forest, they're both within a mile and a half. And, uh, adjoining property would, could have kept.
Okay, so, that means that seems like either pursuing lease for sale, with the board were to decide sale is the way to go.
Probably think about similar time.
Yes, yes.
So, one way or another, um.
We want to work with you, you guys have to decide some fundamental questions.
Oh, sure.
And, um, it takes some time and deliberation, uh, the county would be cooperative, their, their facilities out in Lake Bluff on Winchester Road now, used to be in the county building when I worked there, but, they're very accommodating, uh, they want transparency also.
So Jim, any idea what, what the first steps we need to be, uh, with the board need to, uh, make a motion to?
Well, right now, I, I don't think we need to make any motions right now, but I, but I think we've got to consider, I don't know, what's, how do you want to proceed? Obviously, there's some heavy lifting here, doing the zoning changes.
Yeah, and if that's going to take a similar time as, because, you know, the board taking all the steps to, to open the building up for sale for bid, or whatever the process needs to be, um, we'll.
Uh, you know.
I don't, I don't, I, I, I don't think it'd be beneficial to, to pursue both concurrently because it's just going to be at expense. Um, I mean, the, the previous board went through the process of trying to sell the building, that didn't work out for multiple reasons, um.
I, I think some of the moving parts here, obviously, I, I see this, you know, I see the lease with, with trying to change the zoning, that, that creates some complications. To get that done, I mean, same process would have to be done if, if we were purchasing the building.
With the.
Petition could be done as a contract purchaser, uh, happens all the time, you're seeking a rezoning, change the contract's condition on, you know, with the rezone. Obviously, a couple of our moving parts, and the world's changed a bit since March.
Yeah.
It's quite a bit.
We were on, we were moving forward with updates from I D A and what was going to happen. You know, that, that's one question that I still have, we haven't heard back.
Nothing, we did not go back through anything.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, we're somewhat, I, I don't want to, I don't know if we're in limbo or not right now, but.
That's a big concern, yeah.
You know, the less we hear from them, obviously, that's a concern as well.
Yeah.
What, what are you asking them about, I D A?
They've been giving us updates.
Specifically?
They've been giving us updates.
Oh, they give you updates?
They're giving us updates, they were supposed to have a surveyor out earlier than the year, in the year, about March, uh, once the surveyor was out, um, there was going to be an appraiser come in, look at the building shortly after that, um, I D A was then going to present the proposal to the board. Um, so, uh, obviously that proposal, and then by the time they actually break ground, um, you know, a year's apart, uh, but from the updates that I received earlier this year, beginning of this year, I forgot when the last one I, I heard from them, it was probably February, and by the end of this year, at least from the tone of, of the emails and conversation I had done, by the end of this year, the board would have had a proposal from I D A. And obviously, everything right now since March forward has just been totally gone in the back burner and folded, um.
They would take all these buildings down, that, that's what they're interested in, the motel, and this office building, and this building, and.
Not the motel, I think, hold on.
Not the, not the motel?
I, I, yeah, office, office building, and this building is.
I think it was the three buildings.
Yeah, I think it was from, from Shag Park to the office building, to pretty much to the.
Section, the, the stone counter guy there?
Yeah.
Counter top?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
I don't, I don't know, were any of the houses that they did?
I don't think so, just from my understanding is they don't even need to build, and they just, there's no access to them.
Yeah, yeah, there's just no access. Make an apron, apron pretty much gets taken up, that's what it was.
So they just demolished? So they just demolished the buildings?
But then, so then if you talk to, uh, if you talk to.
I'm assuming.
What a loss.
Update off, just gonna get your attention.
It's a build maker too. So well-built buildings.
Yeah, I mean, which would make sense. The, the other, the other thing too is that that's a little bit of a complication with the I dot is the fact that we're a fire department. So it isn't just eminent domain appraisal question of building, they also have to relocate this. Now, we're not operating emergency services directly, but we still have a footprint. And so that's unclear. Uh, they have to procure an office space for us. Those are just.
Yeah.
We don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, yeah. And then the, the board know if the, for, to, to sell the building, um, yeah, for X amount of time, we'd have use of, you know, office space and meeting, meeting space potentially. I mean, obviously, it's, it's available, used as, as desired. Um, but then that, that can't be definite, I'm sure. The district would still need meeting space. District would need to figure out where to meet. I, I don't think there's.
We discussed that and.
I think they would be open to some sort of lease option for, for office space or meeting space.
Great thinking relationship.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, but, uh, options like that are all out there, but it's, 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 there are way to advantage or disadvantage.
Yeah, there's considerations that we don't have the answers on. There's some, there's some strategic thinking. Best way to put it on, cause we've been approached by I dot and how we perceive and how we're using the building and so forth will come into play or how it all unfolds with I dot.
So, uh.
You know, those aren't easy answers for us.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not, don't have a decision or any action to take off this, but one, one action I will take is I'll reach out to I dot. Again, I do have their contact phone number. Um, I'll start there. See, see what, you know, COVID nineteen and Corona, everything, you know, the, the mistake that's going on right now, what, what that's done to their experience. Uh, now I can report back to, to you, Jim and Carl, you know, passing on the rest of the trustees. Um, that can be done and I, I think that'll be the first step. If you don't mind, Jim, if you look into that thick book of, of yours over there, see what, what options there are for, for sale of a municipal building, um, what exactly is required, because I know last time the way that it was done was, done twice. Uh, and there were still questions, so I, I.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I can do, um. Yeah, I think that's all I got for that agenda item. Fortunately, bringing up the, the issues with leasing as is, I wasn't aware of. Um, I didn't think about the zoning, you know, through the boards that they leased, how it's, how it went easier, um.
Well, if we could get a copy of the survey and plans, that at least starts us on our due diligence to, uh, to get further interested and see what can be done.
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Carl, Carl, uh, will get that to you as long as we have it. Um, I have, I have no problem providing that information to you. Um, now, that I guess also covers, uh, agenda item thirteen, discussion up there regarding I dot improvements, nothing. So.
Yes, but are we privy to those? If you, if you get something from I dot that's significant that you.
Sure, I, I, we have discussed, we discussed that meetings, yeah, we discussed that meetings.
Communicate with me because that's.
Yeah.
It could be a deal breaker if they're gonna lower the act, you know?
I still have, yeah, I still have a couple, well, not a couple, uh.
Yeah, exactly, I, and that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I, I thought we were moving along rather quickly.
That's what I thought too, and then it just came to a home. Um, I still have a couple other things that kind of need to be brought up as far as communicating with you then, yeah. Um, just because Percy Anderson's email earlier today, uh, so once that gets kind of figured out, then I don't see an issue with someone from the board updating you with, you know, their clients or if the board decides to, and I don't know, I don't want to do that. I'd rather just go to Ben for setting. Not.
We'll, we'll come to meetings.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, yeah. Uh, we, we, we give, uh, information, whatever, whatever, I got, if any.
We're hearing.
Um.
But who that's gonna be, I don't know, yeah.
Okay. Closing out twelve, closing out thirteen, uh, Chief Crone, yes please?
Yes, we're, uh, just to throw this out there, it may get a little maybe easier in the future for you, but we were having a little discussion about the siren. Um, I wouldn't, uh, you, you, the district would probably be better served moving that siren rather than spending a lot of money to get an easement and provide power to it. So it's pretty much at the far east side of your district, the mile radius, you know, so, um, it's probably not even heard by your farthest east, uh, district residents.
It was put because we couldn't find a location in Lake Forest, it was kind of a, nobody in that, no, no wood club.
Oh, so is that your siren or is it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's like. It was a Lake Forest siren, so, but if it came out something we needed to relocate, we couldn't work into that. It can, it can't be relocated.
I, 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 I thought it was their district's siren, so, all right, well then, forget that.
They just housed it, yeah.
So I'll tell him that he's not moving, that's right.
Yeah, we could, we could figure that out. Um, yeah, it is a benefit to the district, but it is lost by Lake Forest, um.
It's interesting, it's interesting thinking about it, cause I, I live on, as far away from here in the district as you can. And I hear the, I hear the Lake Forest one at noon every day.
Yeah.
And of course, we hear the base all the time. You woke it up, or I, I, it starts banging after every morning at eight to ten.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's amazing how they sound curious.
Yeah. I hear that one off the base too. Um, okay. I think that's it for that. Um, item fourteen, other items that may be lawfully brought before the board. Um, Dave, do you have anything else, uh, to bring up for discussion?
Um, as far as leaving the district, sale or something, or am I, um, just, uh?
Um, I guess leaving the district will be one of them, that, that, but as far as sale and lease, my apologies, we kind of moved on from that, but if you had anything else to add to that, we can, we can. Okay, um, yeah, so other items that may be lawfully brought before the board, uh, yeah, per your email earlier today, uh, looks like by more than likely the end of the month, you'll be moving out of district?
That is correct. Uh, after our, I asked a, uh, meeting, schedule meeting, I listed my house, uh, it sold a lot quicker than I expected and.
Congratulations.
Had a proffer on, on Lake Forest, pretty exempted, and they want to be in their valley. They want to move in on the twenty-eighth and before the extension, thirty-first, so as of the thirty-first, I will be out of the district.
Those are their pages.
Oh, those are your pages, sorry.
No, that, that system's gone.
Yeah. Sorry, Dave, I got distracted by the shiny object, um.
So once Dave's no longer a resident of the district, his seat is vacated.
Yeah.
And it'll be up to the remaining board members. You will be able to appoint a board member that will serve out until the next election. Now, normally, then the next election and there's an election to serve out the remainder of the term, but the way you guys set up here, because this is the first elected board, and Dave was on a two-year term, so he was up, he was gonna be up again uh, in, in the consolidated election in April twenty-twenty-one. So, uh, so anybody that's appointed will serve into, would serve the remainder of Dave's term, and then they would have to run again if they, if they chose to.
It will be for a full six year.
Yes, for a full six year. And then Amy is on the four year and Marcin here on the six year, so you've got a long, uh.
It rolls way down.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so with that being said, uh, does.
So right now, I mean, Dave is still, obviously, a resident, uh, you know, he could, you know, however he wants to do it, and I, I emailed him. I, I, I assume by, by the next meeting, he will not be a resident, but I know sometimes real estate deals close, do not close, so. I would, I would, thinking that, uh, you would make sure that this is closed, because if he's still, is trying to sell it, he might be around for a couple more months. But until the day he closes or whatnot, that's when I'd maybe pull the.
Figure a plug.
Plug, I will do this to someone else, yeah.
Right on, Dave. Uh, all right, so Dave, if you can keep us up to date as far, uh, right now, we'll, we'll kind of take it as, you know, thirty-first is last, uh, last acting day as trustee, is that about correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, so if anything changes as far as their closing date or anything like that, uh, please let the board and, uh, uh, Jim know. And how, so I, can Dave be involved in discussions of his replacement?
Sure.
Okay.
Can you vote on it?
No. We, we, no, no.
Okay.
Let's keep up with the township a while backward where the person who intended their resignation, but this, you know, but, but, but there's no opening until the resignation.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, yeah, yeah.
No shenanigans with that.
Yeah, because until his seat is vacated, whether, whether he resigns or, you know, however it, it happens here once he moves out. And, and that could be a fact issue on whether somebody's still a resident. That, that's something that gets litigated, you know, quite often. We're not gonna have that here. But until that seat's vacated, you won't have any ability, you know, you won't be able to fill a spot until it's vacant.
Got it.
So you can make a recommendation, you know, this happens quite a bit, uh, this depends on how you want to, there, there's no guidebook on how you exactly have to do it, um, but I, I don't know what kind of process you, you want to do. There's, there's a number of ways you could.
I think, um, you know, thinking out loud here, uh, by the next, by, by, by the.
Sixty days, sixty days.
Yeah, by the next meeting, we'll, we'll know whether or not Dave has, you know, moved out or not, that'll be after July thirty-first. Uh, we still, we still have a regular meeting, obviously. Um, and then at that meeting, then we can, each trustee can make their recommendations or potential appointments and appoint someone at that meeting if need be.
And if, you, you know, again, there's, you, you can, we can, we can put that on the website, that there's an opening and ask if people are interested. I think, you know, we could, um, send out an email to West Ramon with neighbors, you know, if, if you wish to, to, you know, alert the community that there's an opening if they wish to, to, to.
Cause there's a couple individuals that I'll approach and I'll ask, that's allowed, uh, don't know if you know anyone, um, any, uh, see if we can find, find someone that would, that would be good fit for trustee Anderson to choose. Um, make our recommendations at the next meeting and appointment from there. These will be good plan, uh, I have no problem putting up on the website or mail in and advice.
But, but, so you just wait till the next meeting and then we make your decision, you know, or you want to go ahead and do that now.
I was thinking about doing recommendations and appointments at that, at that meeting, so.
You have sixty, you, you will.
You have sixty days.
Sixty days.
No, so there's don't like, okay, unless, yeah, there's.
And, and we're, we're in a, since I mentioned before, it's a slow cycle right now. Once we get the, the budget done.
We have a business coming up that we're gonna have to.
Right, the, the next thing on the financial stuff doesn't really happen until like September or October, whereas you do all the reports.
All right.
Um, other than that, it would just be if something came up, and again, you, you can call a special meeting, you have, you do have a quorum.
Let's say August, August first, pop it up on the website, pop it up on the Wood, the Wood Neighbors, uh, we'll have our regular meeting then.
Yeah, cause, you know, what, if, you know, if you open things up, which, that people do that, you know, you wanna make sure it's a fair process and that people genuinely want to serve, uh, be, because it, you know, you don't want to.
The citizens committee is, that, that's a group of people that, that have had some exposure, so it'd be nice to, you know, one of.
Yeah, it's, it's really a courtesy, it depends on how you, you know, uh, you wanna go about it and, and, and how, you know. And, and a lot of time, a lot of districts oftentimes will have people on the Board of Fire Commissioners that they're kind of in, in line. So in those situations, that, those are, those are a little easier, cause it's somebody's put in their time with, uh, Board Fire Commissioners. You guys don't have that, um, so you, you've got, I, I would say, not that it's not flexible, um, but, you know, how you choose somebody. Again, you guys could come up with somebody that you think would be a great fit.
There's, there's a couple of people who are really great fits, it's just a question of whether they'll do it or not.
Yeah, these are.
I was talking to one of them beforehand and it, it's like.
His cell phone all of a sudden was cutting out, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, well, as I said, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a one year, basically, it's less than one year, but, but really, the expectation will be that you will run for a, a, the six year period, because you've been trained up now, you know how to, you know what it's entailed. And you get six years, huh?
It's a long time.
So, okay, um, yeah, so just keep us up to date, Dave, if you could, uh, otherwise, as of August first, we'll start putting out the, the want ad for trustee.
All right, sounds good. We start planning the going away party.
Uh, so, sorry, sorry, I mean, you just, you just passed the budget, Dave, it's not in the budget, I'm sorry.
Contingency all at once.
Uh, all right, unless there's anything else, uh.
Oh, can I say congratulations to Dave for becoming a grandfather?
Oh, congrats, you didn't say anything.
I didn't, thank you.
Congratulations.
How's Jim know we don't?
I'm our friends.
I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that.
Aye, aye, aye.
Um, and as far as, let's see, emails, nothing else, condo association's been updated, uh, nothing from, um, Shield twenty-three. They've been kind of doing other stuff that did involve, um, uh, public, public gatherings and meetings, things like that. But, uh, if they still approach us, I think we'll still work with them. Anything new on your end, Amy?
Um, all good.
All good? All right, um, with that being said, no other business, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven eleven P M.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Yes.
Ah, ha, we got our one.
But it doesn't count.
But it doesn't count.
You lose, David.
I appreciate that for Dave. All right, all right, Dave, um, there's nothing else, I'll, I'll just hang up on you.
All right, sounds good.
Thanks, Dave.